Hello and welcome to the July 28, 2021, Meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. Now that the state of emergency has been lifted, public officials can participate. Should I start over? Just keep going. After the -- public officials can participate in public meetings virtually for up to three meetings if they have medical concerns for themselves or family members. We are using WebEx to connect those of us in the room with remote participants. I think anyone, any -- I think all planning commissions are present tonight, but you know, people can still participate through WebEx if you're watching and wish to participate as an applicant or a resident. Before we begin, there are a few things I'd like to cover about participating in portions of a meeting. First, about feedback. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear input, public input on matters. We collect public input through voicemail and our engagement website, bettertogetheredina.org. It is important that you know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of the meeting. You do, if you have submitted by Better Together or some other way, you don't need to submit the same feedback in another way. And all feedback is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, we have a few public hearings. Anyone who wants to provide testimony for these public hearings can do so in two ways. First of all, if you're in the room, you can come and we'll let you know at the time. You'll come and stand at one of the two podiums on the side and give your testimony. If you wish to participate by phone, if you're watching us on TV and you wish to participate by phone, there's an 800 number and I'll give it, I'll give the dial-in information at the time of the public hearings. People in the room will get the first opportunity to speak. Everyone's given up to three minutes and please give your full name and address. And if you're in the room, the green light will go on on the podium when it's time for you to start. And then at 30 seconds remaining, a yellow light will go on and then at the event, when the three minutes are up, a red light will go on. And we'll let you, you know, staff and I will let you know when you're hitting the three minutes. And again, if you've already given feedback, you don't need to testify tonight either in person or by calling in. If you do wish to give testimony, one thing we do ask is that it does not be duplicative if you can of what someone else said. If three people all get up and say, "Yeah, we really like X," it won't matter than it, any more than if one person gets up and says, "I like X." That's just about it. Thanks and again for your patience as we work through to conduct this hybrid meeting. We've come a long way in technology over the last years and I think the rest of the world has also. We hope, but that's how, we hope there will not be any issues. If there are, we'll do our best to try to minimize them and rectify them as soon as possible. So, that's the intro and now we'll go to roll call and I'll ask Ms. Liz Olson of the planning, City Planning Department staff to do a roll call.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Berube.
Here.
Commissioner Alkire.
Here.
Commissioner Agnew.
Here.
Commissioner Bartling.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Navaroff.
Does anyone have any comments or changes to that? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Ms. Olson, could you, do we, do we need to do a roll vote tonight with everyone, all commissioners present? Okay, so if we have motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next, we review, we have, we approve the meeting minutes from our meeting two weeks ago, July 14, 2021. Does anyone have any feedback on the meeting minutes? Commissioner Bartling.
Yeah, just a couple. On Section C regarding the 5615 Sherwood Drive, it just states that Mr. Sonic is the architect and he is not an architect, so should not be referenced as such. And then there's under Section D, it's noted it's Mr. Davis Stahl, I think, but his, of Cutting Nail, and it's actually David Stahl of Cunningham Architects. Item D. As the, up here.
No, it's David and it's Cunningham Architects, not Cunningham, Cutting Nail. Yes.
I was unfamiliar with that firm, so.
You're familiar with Cunningham, Cunningham with one N, C-U-N-I, well, two N's, but yeah, C-U-N-I-N, yeah, okay. Those are good catches. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to approve as, with those changes from Commissioner Bartley?
I move to approve the minutes with the changes suggested.
I have a second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Well, that takes us to a unique item. We don't often have it, Special Recognitions and Presentations. And tonight, we have the Sustainable Buildings Policy being presented. And I believe that's the city's Sustainability Coordinator, Grace Hancock, will she be presenting? Excellent, thank you, welcome.
with the city of Edina.
Hi, good evening, Marissa Bear with Center for Energy and Environment. Apologies as we figure this out. So, thank you for having us tonight. We are here to present to you the proposed Sustainable Building Pod Policy for the city of Edina. We are right now doing a series of engagement sessions, asking into commissions and stakeholders.
Okay. One of our WebEx participants was Matt, and he is still, he was hearing yourself through his ear.
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, we are doing a series of engagement sessions. In addition to Planning Commission, we have also spoken with your Energy and Environment Commission and have done engagement as well with the public and then developers and architects in your community. A little bit of background, just on who I am, why I'm here tonight. So, I'm with an organization called Center for Energy and Environment. We are a nonprofit organization based in Minneapolis. We focus on energy efficiency and clean energy solutions. We work with cities like Edina to develop policies as well. We also do planning, research, financing, program implementation, and program development. We have pretty a wide range of expertise and we are here as part of the Hennepin County's Efficient Building Collaborative. Hennepin County has funded this collaborative to work with cities previously participated City V-Dina through the Benchmarking Ordinance that was created and adopted a few years ago. And currently, we are in Phase Two, which is looking at sustainable building policies, so working with cities to create and adopt policies that have higher standards for new construction and redevelopment. We're going to give a little bit of background. Grace will speak a little bit of kind of how we got here today from the city's perspective. I'll do an overview of the proposed policy, give you a review of the feedback that we've received from other community stakeholders, talk a little bit about some proposed resources to support City V-Dina if they were to adopt this policy, how to successfully implement it, and then open it up for Q and A. So, I will hand over to Grace to talk a little bit about how we got here today.
Great, thank you, Marissa. So, how did we get here? We are responding first to city council values around engagement, community equity, and environment. Those values guide everything that the city takes on and that is including our sustainability initiatives. We also have some projects already underway and so there's a few here on the screens. The city set a goal in 2007 to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 30% by 2025. That goal is under review now as the city develops its first climate action plan. In 2016, the city partnered with XL Energy, their Partners in Energy Program, to develop our electricity action plan. And that plan told us that more than half of our emissions in Edina come from buildings and 60% of that comes from commercial buildings. So, we knew that to address our greenhouse gas emission goal, we needed to look at commercial buildings. The first action that the city took, as Marissa mentioned, was in 2019, passing the Efficient Building Benchmarking Ordinance. So, we're in our second full year of implementation and that ordinance addresses existing buildings. It requires buildings 25,000 square feet or larger to report their energy use to the city and to the county. And starting in 2022, we will start to conduct energy reviews with buildings that are noticeably inefficient. So, now what we're talking about is how do we start to work with buildings from the ground up before they're built? So, beyond council, beyond already, projects that are already underway, we know that sustainability is important to residents. So, here you can see just one slice of the Quality of Life Survey that the city puts out every other year. 2021 was one of our survey years, so we have very up-to-date data. This question was all about sustainability. What sustainable services do residents value? And in every category, residents valued the, more than half of the residents highly valued these categories. So, we know that by looking at sustainable buildings and how can we work with new construction to input sustainability from the beginning, we're looking, we're responding to residents, to council, and to existing practices underway. Now, I'll turn it back to Marissa.
Thank you, Grace. So, before I dive in, just want to anchor everyone a little bit in what a sustainable building policy is. So, a sustainable building policy, it goes into effect when a project requests funding or potentially a land use incentive from a city. It allows the city to establish minimum sustainability criteria that goes above state code, state code for those projects. Currently, the state does not allow projects to go above existing code unless if there's some sort of incentive provided. So, a great example that we'll walk through a little bit later as part of Edina's structure is potentially around TIF. If you offer TIF to a project, part of the negotiation of that TIF funding agreement can include sustainability. This would actually formalize that type of a request, request to say sustainable, sustainability should be part of these projects. Policies often include criteria and targets around pollution reduction, resource conservation. And you may have heard of green building policies, green building standards, it's very similar to a sustainable building policy. Policies like this aren't new to Minnesota. So, starting in 2001, the state legislature direct established of the Sustainable Building Guidelines, which are B3, all projects that receive general obligation funds in the state of Minnesota must build to these standards. In 2006, Minneapolis adopted a LEED building policy. In 2010, the cities of St. Paul and St. Louis Park adopted their sustainable and green building policies and have been implementing those. 2013, Maplewood adopted a policy, a Ronded Ordinance. And then in 2018, the city of Rochester and Destination Medical Center also adopted new construction sustainable standards. So, just wanted to give a little bit of history that this type of policy isn't new to the state of Minnesota. Many other cities are, have and have been implementing policies like the one that we'll review tonight. So, the proposed Sustainable Building Policy for Edina. Some terms and just kind of process flow, so a new development project comes to the city, as I'm sure you are all very familiar. If the trigger here is if that project requests a plan unit development or a PUD or funding from the city of Edina, if the answer to either of those questions is yes, that would trigger the Sustainable Building Policy and that project would be subject to this policy. If the answer is no to either of, to POD, no PUD and no funding incentive, then they would not be subject to this policy. The triggers, as I mentioned, so land use incentives, that would be if a project goes through the plan unit development process, requests a PUD from the city, or has financial incentives. And these were identified in, through the development process with city staff, so housing and redevelopment funds, tax increment financing, often known as TIF, the Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Grants, Housing Improvement Area and Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and then conduit bonds. So, these would be City of Edina funding sources provided to these projects. A sustainable building policy is made up of a couple parts. So, the first, as you can see on your screen, is a third-party green building rating system. These are rating systems, third parties, a very common example is LEED, it's a third-party rating system for buildings to follow. They have a set of criteria. In addition to that, as cities are, can adopt an overlay, in this case, the city of Edina has identified this. This allows cities to focus on very specific goals that they might have. There are a number of sustainability standards out there. They all differ in what they require in terms of energy, waste reduction, or water efficiency. But an overlay allows some consistency, so it's kind of considered a universal requirement regardless of what sustainable rating system is chosen by the project. Every project would have to follow the items identified in the overlay. So, I'll walk through a little bit about what those are identified for Edina, but just understand that it would be regardless of the overlays, I'm sorry, the third-party rating system identified, every project would have to follow the overlay. For rating systems, just things to note, providing third-party verification, so this rating systems that are part of this would be asking the projects to receive that verification. Although some certifications cannot be given until 12 months after a development is constructed, verification is relatively easy to operationalize for the city. It reduces any onus or obligation on city staff to have to actually certify the sustainable standards of that building. Instead, that project developer works with that third-party system that they have selected and gets certified through that process. So, there's technical experts there who can confirm and certify that project and city staff don't have to do that. The way the policy would be structured would be giving developers and contractors, architects to choose the rating system of their choice, where they have the expertise based on their project type, based on their history, based on how they want to build. So, the way you see laid out on the screen in front of you is the rating system options by building type, the items that are identified, so LEED, B3, Green Star Homes, Green Communities, and Park Smart Silver are all kind of best practice rating systems recommended by those building types. But you also see down at the bottom as well, other rating systems is approved. There is net zero ready home, so if a developer says, "I want to build our project to net zero," we have to follow the Sustainable Building Policy. If it's not explicitly called out, but a developer brings it forward, city staff can say, "Yes, we approve that as part of our Sustainable Building Policy." A question we get a lot is about single-family homes. So, we had a pretty thorough conversation with city staff about this, understanding a lot of new development in City V-Dina includes single-family homes, that they should be part of this, but understanding it can be, they're not getting planning unit development requests and they're not necessarily requesting large amounts of funding. So, the policy would not apply unless, as I mentioned, a development request to PUD or the development request public dollars. That's pretty rare for single-family homes, so the most likely scenarios where we see single-family homes being included in a Sustainable Building Policy in Edina is an affordable town, townhome development or some sort of subdivision development that would require a PUD. Kind of just a key takeaway that as we've talked with stakeholders is just identifying policy is unlikely to have a large effect on single-family developments. The overlay system, so as I mentioned, that overlay is that second piece after a project selects the sustainable standard that they want to build to. An overlay allows some universal requirements regardless of what system they identify. This is a way for cities to achieve certain climate or sustainability goals that they've set. In Edina, kind of the three items that have been called out as important to the City of Edina to achieve goals that have been set through your different sustainability plans and electricity action plan. The first around greenhouse gas emissions, so that projects must calculate and report their predicted greenhouse gas emissions. Around electric vehicle charging capability, I would ask around having EV readiness if parking is part of the project, and then also actually installing a number of charging stations when that project opens. And then an item that's added, you can kind of see with formatting, we tried to pull it out a little bit because this was a relatively newer addition, we haven't, it came through just right before we presented to your Environment Commission last week, but it's around electric equipment, electric appliances. So, understanding that electricity is a cleaner fuel source right now, the natural gas, installing electric sources for space heating, hot water heating, cooking, where it is cost-effective. And there's kind of a qualification around that as when the payback periods align with 2030 guidelines. So, if it's a cost-effective update for a developer to do to electrify that equipment. Now, I'll walk through just a little bit of the feedback to date. So, as I mentioned, we've done a number of sessions with commissions, but where we kind of really first started out, and this was through the Hennepin County Efficient Buildings Collaborative, was talking with developers, architects, as just big picture, these conversations were not specific to Edina when we talked to these developers, it was kind of very broad. Just in general, are you familiar with sustainability? If you work in a city or anticipate working in a city that has a policy like this and had a conversation with them? So, I will note on this slide, we had a conversation with your commission to clarify this last week. You'll see they're part of a company mission to be sustainable, so a lot of developers are already incorporating sustainability elements. Someone called out the 85%. This is not 85% of all developers and architects in this state of Minnesota nation. This was just specific to the group that we talked to. There was about 20 to 25 individuals that we convened to have this conversation. So, of that group, a number of them identified that's part of their company mission to be sustainable, so they are familiar, they are incorporating these elements. Some other items were around requirements of funding sources and requirements of the local jurisdiction. Part of that conversation as well was just anticipating potential barriers to following a sustainable building policy. So, kind of the four themes that came out of that was compliance, expertise, cost implications, and consistency when talking with developers. We wanted to understand their barriers, then we also framed solutions around this as well. For compliance, just understanding that policies do evolve, who's going to be confirming that compliance. Around expertise, there is a overall lack of expertise at cities and at different points in the process, whether it's from design or to approval or during actual construction, and that there is some limitation with contractors as well who can do this type of work. Some cost implications, higher standards can result in more costs, and if there's additional reviews during the development process, that can cause delays in construction for consistency. There's some funding sources, as I mentioned, that require their own sustainable standards, so having some consistency there if cities are requiring this policy. Wanted to just share this with you a little bit, and we provided this to the city staff as well as they started this process, just to keep these things as mine as they do as over the past few months have developed this policy. And for solutions, these were things presented to your staff team as well, and we believe incorporated so around compliance, having a single point of contact, a go-to individual to answer questions about policies, having an updated and current website, especially around development review. For expertise, having someone available at different points in the process and a technical expert for guidelines. For cost implications, the possibility if cities can provide grants or incentives to help achieve the goals and streamlining the process to avoid any potential delays. Around consistency, having uniformity in the policies across jurisdictions and that the development agreement lists the requirements to avoid changes in standards. Some sustainability standards are evolving, they increase, there's different versions. I think, for example, LEED is at version 4.1. So, there was a 4.0, it's now a 4.1, so if a project had started when it was four, potentially a city could tell them, "Well, there's new standards, you have to build to this." So, just keeping that in mind. And then we had conversations with Edina-specific stakeholders, so some key takeaways summarized here. Building owners should be able to choose their rating system based on the goals and costs, so that is how the policy is structured, allowing the developers, those architects, those contractors should choose the rating system that they have an expertise in and then also potential cost implications. And that as you bring in those third-party rating system, it really takes the risk and liability off that design team to be able to confirm that. It's important to be able to tell the story of the Sustainable Building Policy through case studies and demonstrating best practices. So, currently, there is a market for sustainability in commercial buildings and less so in multifamily buildings. So, we heard some feedback from stakeholders in Edina that in both cases, a sustainable building policy can help move the market, but there needs to be actual case studies to represent of these projects being successfully built. Second key takeaway, key takeaways from Edina stakeholders, that the policy does take a different approach than what you currently do, which is a questionnaire. Rather than guided questions, this would be a requirement for your new construction, major renovations that do, are, that are impacted by the Sustainable Building Policy, that we should be very clear about the rating system and the version requirements, as I mentioned a couple slides ago, whether that's in the development agreement or in other document, and that there is interest in addressing sustainability in existing buildings and then also to accelerate this policy's adoption. When we talked with your Energy and Environment Commission, their feedback was around for the overlay requirements for electrification and electric vehicles, they wanted those to be a little bit stronger, knowing that the forthcoming Climate Action Plan has some strong goals around greenhouse gas emission reduction. They wanted the timeline for implementation to moved up. There's an education period, I'll show you in a couple slides what the timeline for adoption would look like, but it is out into 2022. Your Energy and Environment Commission recommend that gets moved up. That renovation and remodel should be included in this policy at 10,000 square feet or larger, and that sustainability rating system should include LEED silver as the minimum and when possible, integrate this into your recognition program that exists in the city. So, I've talked a lot about this policy, the feedback. The other piece I wanted to touch on is just proposed resources for implementation. So, as I mentioned, part of the reason I'm here tonight, part of the reason my organization CE is working with City V-Dina on a draft policy like this is through the Hennepin County Efficient Buildings Collaborative. And that collaborative was put together to start creating standardized processes for benchmarking policies, which the city of Edina has adopted among a number of other cities in the metro area. It's a way to share resources, that there's tools for implementation, and it makes this a little bit more economically feasible for cities to do. We are in Phase Two, recognizing that small and mid-sized cities will lack capacity, they lack technical expertise and potential funding. So, we are here through, with Hennepin County to expand resources for cities to develop and implement a policy like this. There's a forthcoming vendor who will be identified to be a technical expert, so through open-source resources inside and outside the county. If a city executes a joint powers agreement, that's that acronym GPA on your screen, then the cities can access that vendor. And what that vendor is going to be doing is looking at the activities of policy requirement education, educating developers, educating city staff about this policy, being a technical assistance for the developer, so if there are technical questions throughout the process, they can be a point of contact to answer that in addition to the third-party rating system. Be there for compliance tracking and certification, and then also reporting as well for those case studies or other data points that may be valuable to the City of Edina. For timeline, so October 2021 is when this proposal plans to go to city council. In Q4 later this year, this is when that implementation vendor will be contracted to be that point of contact, provide technical assistance. And then right now, proposed timeline is around July 2022 is when this policy would go into effect, and that would only be for new developments and new projects that apply and start after that date. So, if there's a project, let's say here tonight, that you will be approving, they would not be subject to that policy, it would only be after that July 2022 date. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well as handoff to Grace. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone want to ask questions? Or would you like to wait for the end of the presentation or anyone? Why don't we just go ahead? Grace?
I would say that is the end of the presentation. You can stop asking questions.
Oh, okay, the end of presentation with people like questions now. Anyone with questions or comments? I assume comments are free or?
Yeah, questions, comments, just to gather all this information and bring it back to city staff as they continue to review and refine this policy.
All right, anyone? I know there's someone here who's got one. Commissioner Berube.
Thank you for your presentation. So, this is a really important topic, right? And, oh, yep. It's an important topic, so thank you for bringing it to us and showing us the work that you've done. What I'm interested in though is, it is so important, so tell us why it would only be something that would be required of buildings that go through the PUD or require financing? Why wouldn't we do this for everybody?
So, I can answer that question. So, right now, state statute does not allow a city to require every building in their jurisdiction to go above code, building code, energy code. So, there has to be some sort of incentive provided to a project to then say, "As conditions of the incentive that I am giving you, we are asking you to go above building code or go above energy code." So, that's where this PUD or funding incentives come in, that's the incentive you're giving to that project. So, unfortunately, without that, you can't require a building or a project to do that.
I suppose unless Edina then eventually changes the code.
Right.
Unless if state building code and energy code get more aggressive than the sustainability standards or state statute changes.
Okay, thanks very much.
And just to clarify about the state statute, the state statute, like in some states, I believe is more permissive.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, this is specific to the state of Minnesota.
Because like, other, other states allow municipalities to be more aggressive on environmental requirements for buildings than Minnesota. for buildings than Minnesota does. Any further, anyone else? Commissioner Miranda?
So you said earlier in the presentation that the, at least the initial goal was to have the developer choose which of the four programs, whatever. And then you mentioned Hennepin County coming into this. Do they have a particular one, or does that work together? How's that work?
So Hennepin County doesn't have a prescribed rating system that cities should be choosing. Part of the recommendations, as part of the collaborative, is to give cities the option of what makes sense. Their recommendation is to let developers choose which policy, because as you get more prescriptive, you can have more pushback, it can be more difficult for projects. So there's no prescription from Hennepin County, and the way it's been set up has been kind of the best practice in terms of developing a sustainable building policy like this.
Okay, thank you. And then, is there any concern that having, I think there were four options in terms of, that some are more lenient in certain areas, and they kind of cherry pick which one is best for them, or whatever?
The standards all have requirements kind of in core areas like energy, water, waste, material sourcing. What, where it varies is how aggressive they might be. So there is some variation. Some policies, so I think of the B3 standards, that's specific to state Minnesota, they have a pretty aggressive energy standard called SB 2030, which is specific to the state of Minnesota, to push buildings a little bit further on energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emissions. And then some other sustainability standards may, they still have energy requirements, it's more aggressive than what's at code, but they may dive a little bit deeper into material sourcing. So there are, each standard touches the sustainable elements, it's just they do all have varying requirements.
And if I can, that is the purpose of the second piece of the policy, the overlay, which as Marissa described, is essentially a universal standard, that any construction, new construction can, you know, select their third-party rating system, but every development that is subject to this policy must comply with the overlay.
Okay, great, thanks.
Commissioner Ragnow.
I have a question and then a comment. So first, I'm curious if there is anything more that we could do about single-family home building, given how prevalent that is within our community. And where I'm going with this is I'm thinking there's probably, right, the triggers. What's actually going to trigger something to come through, and how much are we able to influence? And so we could brainstorm, I won't do that here, potential triggers that could indicate whether a single-family home would be eligible for this, but I'm guessing you've already done a lot of research on that. So I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit more.
So we did host a very similar conversation with your city staff team, we dedicated, I believe it was about a 60, 90-minute kind of Zoom meeting with them, just focused on the single-family discussion. And kind of where we landed was to really focus on that triggers, because, and as I understand it, and Grace, please correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of, some single-family homes that are receiving public funding are part of affordable housing developments, and it could put a potential burden on that project to say, we're not going to, we're not going to do this anymore. So have that requirement, there could be additional exploration as well beyond, maybe it's not a PUD, maybe it's not funding, maybe it's a different incentive that you often provide single-family developments, and that could be a trigger just specific to that type of project.
The one that popped into my mind was when we see lots being combined. I don't know if that's actually a trigger, but, and that I thought of. And then I wanted to comment a little bit on the parking certification that is a possibility here. I think that the only two things that really drive sustainability in parking are less parking, and then in parking ramps, requiring that they are flat and level, so that those could be turned into alternative uses down the road. But in my research into the Smart Park Silver, it doesn't seem that either of those are a part of that certification. And so my recommendation would be to tackle this more from the overlay component, such as implementing, I don't know, parking maximums, or requiring all new parking to be unbundled. Potentially, that could be something that, that gets really at the sustainability component. Or in addition, bike parking requirements. So those all feel like things that could be included in the overlay, and then potentially, we wouldn't need the Smart Park Silver as a certification program. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
North side of the building. Commissioner Bennett?
Oh man, thank you so much. This is very, very important. I feel like I have a million comments and a million questions. And a lot of them, just to be frank, just stem from, I guess, plain devil's advocate over the years sitting up here. I mean, I think the tone that we've set as a city is like, hey, we're green, but we really don't act like it. And so I can't even recall one development that's come through here that is truly sustainable. And it really starts at the beginning. And so I worry with at least some of the process, you know, at least we've learned with TIF, you know, they're going to get it approved and then chase TIF. So if they get it approved, it's already designed, it's already, you know, and like, design is the most important part, you know, to set the tone for a sustainable building. Otherwise, you're just putting a bunch of sustainable Band-Aids on it. So I'm, I'm a little worried about process, and I, and I just say that because we know developers go the path of least money resistance. So, you know, they're going to exploit any possible holes and go different ways, like they might not chase a PUD just to avoid this extra cost. So it would be nice to figure out how, how we can, if it's, you know, if we can't change the building code, and maybe this is a bigger question, like, how do we get uber-specific in our comp plan to really set the tone for the sense of urgency when it comes to green building and design? So I'm a little concerned with the process, especially TIF, like, that sounds good, but like, I mean, I know what's going to happen is they'll get it approved, and then here's some solar panels, and there's not much we can do at that point. So that's a comment, I suppose. And it went kind of into the ownership challenges with some developments, you know, we, if there isn't skin in the game for the developer, like if their plan is to sell the building, you know, they're going to do whatever they can to do as little as possible for the long term. So again, like, how, how can we be more proactive beyond the confines of this? Like, this seems like a good start, but I feel like we need to get way farther, way quicker. And I'm totally open to like, way more aggressive policies and maybe more, you know, fully sweeping ones, like, we talked about, we have so many single-family homes, it's, is it 93% of our households, or is it, is that the land area that they consume? Either way, it's a huge piece. So even if, if we can't mandate stuff, if we can get something in place that just strongly educates and encourages, and the city can provide incentives to go above the code, for instance, you know, your permits are reduced by a certain amount if you achieve these things. And then, I think the last two things, I'm curious about what other cities are doing. You mentioned bigger cities. I know, I mean, we have like, I think the fourth-largest tax base in the state, so I know size-wise, it's probably Minneapolis, St. Paul, Rochester, Duluth that we're talking about. Do they have similar things in place that you guys have helped recommend, and where does that compare to what we're seeing tonight?
So to answer the question, cities of Minneapolis, St. Paul, St. Louis Park, Rochester, Duluth for municipal buildings, Maplewood, all have policies in place. CE wasn't part of the development of those. We are through Efficient Buildings Collaborative. St. Louis Park's in the process of updating their policy. It was adopted about 10 years ago. Updating it right now is part of Efficient Buildings Collaborative with Hennepin County. We're working with them to identify some more aggressive targets. And there's other cities developing these policies right now. City of Norfield is creating one, and then there's a handful of cities considering policies in the metro area, they're starting those discussions. So I think what we're seeing a growing trend is more cities are starting to consider something like this, starting to engage stakeholders, starting to develop. Some cities are where Edina is, where they're ready, they're in the process, we have a draft policy, let's engage our stakeholders, let's get ready to adopt it. In terms of comparing to others, I'd say fairly similar in terms of funding. So cities of St. Paul and St. Louis Park are two really great examples where they have funding requirements to trigger their sustainable building policy. I will say right now, Edina is the only city who's considering that land use incentive, so that PUD requirement. Other cities currently don't have that. City of Minneapolis is incorporating that type of language into their policy to have that on the books, because they are having a lot of projects who aren't requesting funding, so they're circumventing that sustainability requirement. They're giving a lot of land use incentives, density bonus, PUDs, so they are now going to incorporate that into their policy, so sustainability is part of those projects.
Okay, good. Do you know about other cities, I guess, outside of Minnesota? I suppose there's some in California that are pretty rigorous, because it really matters, but, and that's based off of one of the comments from the Commission on Energy and Environment, they said, we recommend at least LEED Silver. I mean, there are several categories that you could achieve, and I suppose some in California, it's like, you have to have LEED Platinum for, I mean, maybe civic buildings, because the city actually decides the fate of those, but are you aware of other major cities outside of Minnesota and what they do that we could steal a cue from?
So there are, there are a number of cities, you mentioned, outside of the state of Minnesota that have policies similar to this. There are some that are very, very aggressive on the west coast, especially in California. If you've been tracking at all, there's a lot of cities who are banning new natural gas hookups, so that requires the building to have to be all-electric. Right now, no city in the state of Minnesota has anything like that. There has been some conversations to prohibit that type of activity. I don't think anyone's really seriously discussing putting this forward, so that would be like, way, like, way left field. Things that I think that could potentially be incorporated, when you mentioned LEED Silver, that was a recommendation from one of the commissioners, because as it's written right now, is it's just LEED, there's many certification levels in LEED, they thought bronze was too low. So they thought silver was kind of a best practice at minimum, you have to do LEED Silver. It could be higher, though, I could say, if Edina wanted LEED Platinum. If you choose LEED, you have to build to this certification in the LEED infrastructure.
Thank you. And I guess my last comment, and it's a recommendation, because it seems like even, I mean, as we bring up, this is only addressing like a small wedge of what we want to actually impact in the city. And so there are some big projects that come by us or come through us, and one similar thing we, or something we do, I'd say above what we used to do is, you know, we have Mick Johnson, you know, kind of provide this extra review for how the architectural, as well as just the development achieves our South Dale guiding principles and the experience. It'd be nice to know if this technical expert or whoever we have, we could provide a similar sort of recommendation based off of sketch plan reviews, to give us a lot better guidance, because I feel like every, every proposal, I'm, I'm up here because I know this stuff well, saying, this hasn't been considered yet at all. It's like the same siren every, every proposal we see. And so now we're already starting too far, too late. So it'd be nice to have someone spend some time for some of the, I mean, anything that is requesting a variance or a zoning change, that's commercial building or multifamily. It'd be nice if we could get a review like that, just of that proposal or development, to help us make some, you know, negotiations and stuff that are more targeted and specific, versus like, yeah, we want to see solar panels, and so that, that's just an idea.
Commissioner Bartley, you're being pointed at. Did you want to say something?
I don't know, I, I've been working on with this for many years. I, I'm an architect, so obviously I've had to, I think one of my, the comments, I guess, the struggle I've had, I do healthcare, so we've, we've most have gone, many years ago, started following the LEED, you know, and, and doing silver, gold, platinum, whatever, but it's a really costly and really arduous process. So the Green Guide for Healthcare was done, and now we pretty much follow that, and it takes a lot of what is in the LEED requirements, but there's not the process and there's no cost. So, you know, what is your thoughts on, you know, if requiring that process is, is, is something that might hinder, you know, people wanting to move in that direction versus just, again, I think we really do have to lobby much stronger to get the codes stronger, or even if it's our city overlay that's required, you know, I think that's our only way to do it. But again, thinking, I guess my thought for you, or question really is, do you think you'd be going forward, or do you think there's a way to not have to follow that LEED process and still fulfill what, you know, a better, a better outcome?
I'm happy to answer that question first, and then Grace, please chime in. So when this, when we're speaking with cities after these stakeholders, there's a few folks who shared similar sentiments, but also shared that, you know, if there isn't that third-party certification, and we've actually seen this in St. Louis Park, right now they don't require certification, so they just have to trust the developer to be like, yep, we built to LEED. There's no certification to say it actually was built to that standard. But with the way your policy is set up, it gives options to developers, if they don't want to choose LEED, they don't have to, there's other options for them to choose from. Definitely understand that there can be potential burden. And part of the feedback that we received with developer engagement as well was, is there a possibility, if you're having a lot of developers who approach the City of Edina, they are impacted by this policy and say, we can't do it because of the cost implications or because of the certification, to follow LEED, because that's our only option in this type of building. The city can say, okay, we can waive, or we can provide you additional funding potentially to help cover those costs. So I think it is part of a conversation, but definitely understand that type of criticism. It's not the first time we've heard it, but what we have seen for cities who don't require the certification is the developers are saying they're following, but there's no one to actually confirm that that happened.
Yeah, and following up on that, you know, I'll mention that developers can petition the city to use a different third-party rating system than is outlined in the policy. So perhaps Green Guide could, could be one that's on the table. So we could have that conversation. But to reiterate Marissa's point, you know, we're lucky in a way that St. Paul and St. Louis Park have been implementing very similar policies for the last 10 years, and we can learn from their missteps, and one of those missteps was not requiring certification. So that is a strong pillar of our proposal.
Commissioner Olson?
I was going to make the same, excuse me, comment that Commissioner Bartley said, because I know that the LEED certification is just a pain in the butt. Plus, if you start later, then you have to do all that backtrack and all that paperwork. So I kind of agree that if there's a way, I know you're saying you can't enforce it, but it seems like, since we're creating this policy, we could still have those teeth and just not require that. And the same with the B3, I think it's awesome what it does, and all the different levels, but again, very, you know, to have to get that certification. I mean, if you don't have to do it, if you don't have the geo-bonds, but I think this is great. I, I was reading through your, your report, and I think you answer a lot of the questions, you know, and like, how to, you know, enforce it, and to have, like what you were saying, like a, to have a Mitch kind of on board to kind of enforce it, so, or not enforce it, but to give us, you know, advice. So, but I agree, it's, it's baby step, you know, but I, you know, it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything further? Okay, so I have a few things, a few questions and comments, and thank you. Thank you for all, everyone else, your comments. I think this is, this is, I thought it was a great presentation, and I like, probably more than like, the goals, what you're trying to accomplish, and the vision you're laying out. I mean, this is really good, I think it's one of the most important things we could be working on. I have some questions, I have some concerns, I have some positive comments also, but maybe I'll start with my questions. And these are probably in a relatively random order. Healthy building, that's something that's coming up now that really people didn't talk much about two years ago. Is that at all related to this, or would that be a separate thing? Is that's more of a, considered more of a private matter, if a builder wants to, or developer wants to have something healthy as opposed to this? Or what's your, what are your thoughts?
I'll mention that these rating systems all take into account indoor air quality and use of non-toxic materials. So MNB3 and LEED both directly address the, the indoor comfort and health of a building. So it's not something we've considered for the overlay, for instance. It's something we could consider if, if the commission were to make that kind of comment, but the third-party rating systems-
third-party rating systems do have some baseline level of air quality and non-toxic material use in their requirements.
Okay, good. Totally separate. What kind of feedback are you, you know, we're getting some feedback from like people that work with developers, but what kind of feedback are you getting from developers about these kinds of requirements?
So those are some of the slides. I'll, if this is still presenting, can go back, summarize some of that. So part of the conversation was around some of these barriers, so it was an open floor. We were there to say, "We want to know what your criticisms are of these types of policies, if you've experienced it, or if you anticipate experiencing a policy like this." So it was around that kind of compliance, that technical expertise. The cost implications were called out, consistency as well. If, every city has a different policy, you know, let's say, city of Hopkins says everyone has to be lead platinum, no matter what, you are lead platinum. Edina is like, "You can be whatever policy you want." And then city of Union Prairie says, "You have to be MNB3." That can cause some confusion, so some of the recommendations through head of county is to have that choose your rating system. That's what we're recommending to cities. That's how St. Paul, St. Louis Park, Minneapolis are being set up. But then in terms, I just want to call out with the feedback as well, solutions. So there are developers, architects on this call who've had experience, and there were some who, "We've never tried this, we haven't done this before, but this is what we would need from a city," or what we would need from sort of, sort of technical expert or a vendor to provide us support. That is around that single point of contact, that's around someone to be there very early on in that design process, so it's not later on in the conversation, and all the way through construction and certification, and then if possibly streamlining process within the city. So I'd say we've had very positive engagement with the development community throughout this. You know, we've always approached that conversation, "If we want to hear from you, what, what are your concerns? What are those barriers?" But then also frame it then, "What are the solutions that you would want a city or someone to provide you to help overcome those barriers?" So I think we are hopeful, as that feedback was provided to city staff, we've kept that in mind through the development of this policy and believe it does address those barriers and brings forward those solutions.
And I'll just mention that the following slide after that, this one is drawn from two conversations that we hosted with Edina, developers who often develop in Edina, and so we kind of heard the spectrum where we heard, yes, you have to, the first sub-bullet point, you know, you must require certification, otherwise the design team is liable for, for the risk of not actually being compliant. To the other side of, there's no way we could afford to ever certify this is on the rest. So we heard it, we're taking it into account.
Excellent, thank you. Do the certifying companies, whatever, I don't know what you call them, but do they also consult on how to achieve certification, or are they just reviewers purely?
There are some systems where they have an expert to provide some consultation, be a point, that, I don't know if you've ever, lead's a great example. There are, you know, hundreds of pages of requirements that someone needs to be an expert on, so they do have folks to go to, but then also the idea as well with this potential vendor forthcoming, they will have that technical expertise as well for each rating system rather than just specifically in one.
Thanks. Just as a sign, I'll get more comments. That actually is a concern of mine, because in every, almost everything I've worked in my career, medical device, third-party auditors also gave you consulting, public company proxy advisors, they'll advise the investors on whether to vote for your proxy ideas or not, but then they'll also consult with the companies about how to achieve, get approval. Oh, I have a few other examples, but it just, that's always common, becomes, almost becomes half of racket in itself. It's like they give you, they can kind of give you the, the bad news, and they say, "Ah, but we have this consulting arm over here." Do the, let's see, can I ask something else? Well, maybe I won't ask. So I'll give some comments, and that, and my comments kick, you know, oh, one other thing, on the, on the, this is in your program, you mentioned TIF earlier, one of your presentation stuff, well, if they actually do apply for TIF, this is a way to actually keep them in compliance, right? Because that's what you said in your, in one of your, city of Rochester, for example, has written to the TIF that if they don't continue to comply, they don't continue to get the TIF, right? I mean, so that could be some advantage to that.
That's right.
But I am going to start with what Commissioner Bartling said, and I have, you know, just a tiny fraction of the industry experience as she does, but I have other experiences working with these, you know, kinds of regulations and, you know, and nonprofit or, you know, non-governmental regulators. In a, you know, I'll kind of summarize it by saying, in a perfect world, I would do half of this, but I wouldn't do this, but, but I don't know if we live in a perfect world, and I want to explain what I'm saying in a little more detail, and so maybe we should do this, and, you know, I'm only going to have a few minutes to talk to you and listen to this, so other people maybe can take more time to look into this. In my opinion, the more layers of requirements you place on a developer, the more, either the, it's unlikely the cost to the developer is going to go up. Either the developer's going to take that, the amount of, that cost from some other portion of the building, and, you know, something else won't get built as well, or if they do increase their costs, they'll also increase their rent and the charges to their, to their client. And while environmental is very important, it's one of my, I think, most important things. I think we also have to be aware of economic disparities that get produced by some of these things, because the more you add these costs, and then if, you know, what happens is it becomes, it becomes an enhancer of economic disparity, because then the wealthy people can have these nice buildings, and it's harder, it becomes harder and harder for people that aren't wealthy to be able to have the nice buildings because they've cost so much. So I think it's, I think it's mandatory that we figure out ways to make things more environmentally sound, but I'd like to recommend that we do it in the most cost-effective manner possible, and if you can avoid the third parties, the third parties and avoid that cost and delay, I think, I think that's better, but that's a perfect world. I don't know if we really can. You know, I think some cities are, as you've talked, I mean, and I think the state of Washington's another example, or they're actually mandating certain requirements in the green area, but then, you know, then there's two components to that. One is you need the time and the expertise to come up, the city needs the time and the expertise to come up with their standards, which I'm sure, you know, consultants like the ones in front of us have the expertise and could be advisors on that, but then the city also needs the time and the expertise to go and enforce. And one of the advantages of this program is that the third party is enforcing it, and the city doesn't have to have the, have the resources to enforce, and so it, you know, someone's got to think through that. That's why I think in a perfect world, you're doing something on environmental, and I guess you're only doing the third party if there's really no other way to make sure that it truly works, if you, if you can't come up with your own standards. One final thing, just separately, so that's why, you know, in a perfect world, I wouldn't do it, but we might not live in that perfect world, and this might be the right solution to achieve the goals. The other thing I will say, I just want to point out, is, I don't know if this is a reason for or against, but something I want to point out, is just a couple of years ago, we did the comprehensive plan, and we came up with a lot of things that we wanted from developers to get a PUD or get a variance, and we listed them, and we kind of put it in menu format, and it was, you know, "You pick, and then based on what you pick and what you want to do, then we'll decide how much of what we're going to give you, or let you vary from our codes." And maybe that's fine, you know, or, but what we're seeing now is, and this may be the right path, I don't know, I personally want to think about, maybe everyone else has already opinions, what we're seeing now is that other people that have interest in discrete areas that were previously menus in the comprehensive plan for developer have now, are now moving into, well, this, this one is mandatory, or we want to make this one mandatory. We're seeing that, we saw it in traffic demand management a few months ago, and maybe that's right. You know, maybe they should be doing something more in that, maybe that's not a, a menu item, maybe that's a requirement now, and maybe we're going to, instead of green buildings, that was a couple of years ago, that was a menu item, and maybe we do want to make it, no, this is no longer a menu item, this is a requirement. I just think we ought to think through that change. The world has changed a lot just from 2018, when we wrote our comp plan, and, you know, maybe that justifies changes, but I just think that maybe when this goes to city council, hopefully they think about that and realize that, you know, do we, do we wish to change from options to choices? Oh, I remember my other question. Thank you. That's my only company, one other question, it's a small one. When the, when the people do get their certification, and this is by something you know for sure, is it like a point system where you got to get like, there's all these different things you can do, and you got like 80 points, and you get, that's, it's, okay?
Yeah, so the certifications, there's points tied to certain actions. If you achieve that, you get the point, and then as it's accumulated, then you meet the threshold and you can be certified at different levels.
And that's why it says throughout your present, your presentation and your written document, developers get to choose. Okay. Well, that's everything I had. Anyone else who wish to follow, or Commissioner Miranda?
One quick thing, since Chair Nemirov mentioned healthy buildings, and I know you've got a lot on your plate right now, but if you're working on part B or something, there, I know there's something called the Center for Active Design, which is about getting people inside buildings to have a more enjoyable experience, get more active and that sort of thing, so if that's something that you guys can work on, that'd be great, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It really, it really was, this is really great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, everyone, next on our program is community comment. And what community comment is, it's just, if you're calling, if you're watching on TV, sorry, you get to watch, but you don't get to call in. Community comment is where members of the public can come and speak for up to three minutes on any topic related to the planning commission other than something that's on our agenda tonight, and it's because of the rules are structured for these hybrid meetings, it's only available to people that are here and present. So just state your name, and your address, and welcome, and have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Julie Risser. I live at 6112 Ashcroft Avenue, and I share some of the concerns that I've heard tonight, specifically about sketch plans moving forward, and already the ball is rolling, things are happening, and it's really too late to influence things. I bring to you the triangle, I believe it's called the Triangle of Discretion, and I know it's something that you see quite a bit, and the green zone, comprehensive plan. Does the comprehensive plan really mean that much? Is it really guiding development? And I live in the Wooddale Valley View neighborhood, I feel like it's not. We get into yellow, variances, CUPs, IUPs. What happens if a variance or a CUP moves forward and the staff report is really incomplete? I think that's happening, and I think we need to talk about it. What happens if the building permit, that very pinnacle of the Triangle of Public Discretion, where we cannot go, has been issued, but things really aren't going well? And I want to walk you through a project that happened here and take you back to 2018, December 12th. I know some of you were on the commission, you were reviewing plans for the New Horizon Academy, and this is an image you didn't see in the staff report. It was part of the material that the developer put on, and you can see it online today. But during the meeting, there was absolutely no information whatsoever about the easement that is there on the parcel that grants this owner of this property, this single-family home, access to the garage and to the open space which functions as the driveway to the property. That was not brought up, but kudos to the planning commission, because the very first question was, "Isn't there an easement?" To which there was a response, "Yes, there is an easement," and then the comment from planner Teague was, "Add that to the practical difficulties they," referring to the developer, "will have to work with." Okay, so, and here I want to come back and ask, what exactly is the function of the staff report moving forward beyond the purview of determining whether or not a project will go forward? Is this what informs the engineering department? Is it then the onus of the engineering department to dig around and find out if there's an easement? Because what ended up happening was, the developer decided, "Who cares? I'll just pretend the easement's not there." And the person who lives in that place could not access the garage for months, was completely cut off from the garage, from the driveway. And I would like to refer you, you know, go Google Star Tribune, Winona LaDuke, and you can read about the decision that was made regarding the sheriff making it impossible for her to use the driveway. And there's even a comment by the, I can't remember who said it, but let's just say constitutional rights came up in that dialogue. Okay, so, you know, when that happens, what's going on? The other thing is development's underway, right? We're at the top of the pyramid, all right? This is the dirt pile that's currently on the Burley site, which I have tried to find out why--
Ms. Risser, can you, can you reach, can you conclude? It looks like the three minutes have ended.
Plan's too big, project's too big. Hey, you can put your dirt on the lot across the street. If the project's too big, the developer knows it going in, there is no excuse for the neighborhood to have to suffer because of that. Okay, and now, you know, you know about what's going on right now, and how housing density our neighborhood is being told can be calculated by--
Thank you, Ms. Risser. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please come back to the next--
The, the community is living with that reality, and I think that we should have some clarification on that. It is very stressful for our community.
Thank you, thank you. That's, thank you. Is there any other community comment this week? All right, well, why don't we go to public hearings? And we have one, one public hearing tonight, and that is 4904 Bywood West, a variance for relief from the requirement to have a 50% full-deep basement under the main floor, and presenting for the city is Assistant Planner Chris Sacher.
904 Bywood West, the variance request is for less than a 50% basement. The subject property is fronting Bywood. It consists of two lots. There's a lot that has, currently has a single dwelling unit on it with a pool, and then the property owner also owns the lot behind it that has access off of Interlocken. Now, some of you may recall that there was a variance that was approved in October of 2022 for a new house. The property owners were going to tear down the current house that was built in 1960, and they were going to rebuild on the property. That property is in an area of localized flooding, so in order for them to have the lowest floor above the flood elevation would mean that the basement floor would have to start at grade currently. So anything above that, then, you'd have the basement, the main floor, the second floor. So at the time, and this is the house that was approved, it's, has a pool, they were planning on a sport court on the back lot with the detached garage accessing off of Interlocken, and then to eliminate having a basement, they did ask the engineering department if they could have a small shelter for a storm that would be not a basement, it was just a storm shelter at a lower level that was going to be flood-proofed, but they still, in order to accomplish that, they needed to have a first-floor elevation variance, so they were going to be a little bit higher. So that was the first floor plan of the house that was approved, and then the elevation of that new house. Now, that variance, actually, they could build that house, they have up until October of this year, the anniversary date of the meeting, for them to exercise their rights to use that variance, however, since that time, the owners have decided to just add on to the current structure that they currently have, the house that was built in 1960, which, this is a photograph of the house, it looks like that today, and what they're planning on doing is adding to both ends of the house, and then an infill in the back. They will have a new pool, a new pool house, and then, again, they'll do this, a similar thing with the sport court, detached garage that accesses off of Interlocken. They submitted building plans based on additions, and I believe they thought that it wouldn't require a variance. They do have a basement underneath their current home, however, with the amount of crawl space they're adding, they're no longer at it, they, they wouldn't be at 50%, which is the requirement of the city. So that permit's been put on hold, they are going through the variance process this evening in order to accomplish additions to the home. Now, they can't-- Now, they can't add any more basement. If they did, they'd have to elevate up to the level of the grade that's currently out there. So the rules for them, in order to add on, really prohibit them from, you know, they either have to tear it down, rebuild and elevate, or they have to get a variance from the basement requirement. So this is the existing basement. They do have basement area with slab on grade garage, front porch area, main floor, and then a second floor. The second floor really isn't changing. They'll be remodeling the interior. So this is the new first floor. Or actually, I'm sorry, that was the basement with the crawl space. The new first floor, they'll be adding to both ends of the house and then also going out the back a little bit. They'll have a screened room, pool room, pool behind. And then that second floor will be, the upper floor will be remodeled. So this is the new elevation. It actually, from the street, will just be a little bit wider. It's not getting any higher or taller. The previous request, they were still below the overall height requirement, even though they were elevating the house a little bit above the required or maximum first floor. They're not adding any additional basement area. It's, it's an existing nonconforming situation that they have currently. But any area that they're going to be adding would require some sort of crawl space. So that's really what the variance is going to be addressing this evening. So here's some side elevations. And then the house in context with the homes on either side. What you really can't tell from this rendering is that the house to the right or to the north at 4900 is actually much further back. And the subject home is at a lower elevation than the homes on either side. So it doesn't quite give you an idea of what the current conditions are. But in terms of what staff recommends and given the issues that they have to contend with, the proposed use is permitted in the R1 single dwelling unit district. It complies with all the other zoning standards, with the exception of the 50% rule. Because they have to contend with the 100-year back-to-back flood risk criteria, it is acceptable in this situation to eliminate the basement requirement or they would have to elevate. The applicant has indicated that the existing home onsite currently has a full basement, which it does, and it has never had any groundwater problems. The current sump pump does not run. The professional soil borians have shown no groundwater until reaching a much lower depth than the proposed crawl spaces. Nevertheless, engineering standards, basement area cannot be constructed at the existing basement elevation. It has to either be elevated or on a crawl space. One question is, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The owners have indicated that they would certainly comply with the full basement ordinance if the floodplain conditions allowed for it. So they really have, they're very limited in their choices. The house is basically going to be similar to what it looks like today, with the exception that it will be getting wider, but it's still within the required setbacks. Staff does recommend approval of the variance, subject to the findings listed in the staff report. And the site must be developed based on the survey date stamped June 28, 2021. Building plans and elevations dated June 28, 2021. Compliance with the conditions and comments listed in the environmental engineer's memo. They have already looked at this during the building permit process. They've also reviewed it again for the variance that is being requested this evening. And that the two lots that they own will be combined. They're planning on vacating easements between the two lots so that they're able to utilize it as one parcel. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have. I do know that the builder is on Webex and the owners are Jeff and Molly Ingsma. I've been told they were going to be here. I don't see them. Oh, okay.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sacher. Do any members of the commission have questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Alkire?
Excuse me, thanks. Just a clarification, the building coverage number, is that with the lots combined or just the single parcel that has it exist today?
Oh, it's... I believe that's with combined.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I think I just say this is the east end and that's the west end instead of south and north. But if, nobody else has any questions this time? With, with the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to speak? It's not required, but you're definitely welcome.
Yeah, Chris did a good job. Nothing really to share. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do anyone, does anyone on the, any of the members of the planning commission have questions for the applicant? No, okay. Well, again, this is a public hearing. And I said earlier, if anyone would like to participate by phone, I would give the call in number. So here it is. If you're watching and you'd like to give a comment on this, please call 1-800-374 or the number on your screen, although I think I have a different number than the conference ID. I have the number 374-0221 and I have conference ID 684-8907. Please do not call the number on your screen. Please use conference ID 684-8907. And the phone number again is 1-800-374-0221. Conference ID again is 684-8907. And then press star one and you're placed into queue, at which time you will give your name and address and we look, we're grateful to hear from you. With that, I turn to our AV team and ask if there's anyone on the line.
We do not have anyone on the line right now. As you know, there is a brief delay in the broadcast, so I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on, just in case someone's trying to get in the queue. My clock shows that it's 8:18, so I will come back to you at 8:19 or when we have a speaker, whichever is first. It is now 8:19 and I still don't have any callers, so I think it's safe for you to move on.
Well, let's move on. So I'll bring it back to the planning commission at this point then and ask if anyone has any further comments or motions or questions.
Did we close the public hearing? Is that what we're doing right now? Oh.
Carrie, do we need to close the public hearing? Can we make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Do any planning commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Olson. Do any planning commissioners have, would you like to make a motion or have any comments or anyone?
I have a question and I apologize, I should have asked this. It's a question for you, Chris. Cause I'm just looking at the two lots and I know that you had mentioned that they were going, they're going to combine them into one lot or the fact, or when does that happen? Because I know that they're also now adding a driveway. I know this gets away from the variance and I can't believe I'm doing this, but I can't help myself. But they're, you know, constructing a whole new driveway, you know, the recreational.
Yes. They have the easement vacation process. They have to divide the two lots because they have an easement between the two properties. So they're going to do a little easement. So that's a separate process that has to be approved through the council. And that's part of that, but also that combined lots, which is not, and actually is taken by the planning commission.
Right.
But it is a condition of the variance and it was the condition last time they went through the variance process.
Okay, okay, so that will all be covered. Okay, thank you. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments or motions or?
I, I move to approve the request for, for relief from the requirement to have a 50% full depth basement under 4904 Bywood West, subject to conditions laid out in the staff memo.
I second.
Motion second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes. Which takes us to the end of the public hearings and on to reports and recommendations. Tonight, Stephanie Hawkinson, the city's affordable housing coordinator, will present to us on a recommendation that we find that the plan for 4040 West 70th Street are consistent with the comprehensive plan for the purpose of tax increment financing. Hello, Ms. Hawkinson?
Inauguration and the person that wiped down the podium, I kind of wanted that job after Lady Gaga saying. So I've been watching Jennifer tonight and she's reminded me of that podium person. Hello, sorry for that interlude. I am Stephanie Hawkinson. I'm the Affordable Housing Development Manager. And this is going to seem a little deja vu for some of you of my request for this evening because I made the same request in December of 2019, at which time a resolution was approved. But at that point, I was seeking an amendment to the Southdale to TIF plan. I am seeking that tonight, but we are creating a housing district in addition to amending the plan. So that is why I am here before you again with a very similar request. So I am going before City Council on August 4th with a public hearing to create a new housing TIF district for 4040 West 70th. And tonight I want to get confirmation from you all that the proposed affordable housing plan complies with your comprehensive plan. So that would be the approval of resolution B-21-22. And the site is, as you can see in this map, it is office residential. It's zoned office residential. And here it is to orient where it's located in the city. And then the housing district boundaries themselves would be the lot. And it's zoned, planned commercial. And the proposed plan is for 118 units, and you've seen this before, for site plan approval process, is for 118 units of age-restricted affordable housing. And excerpts from the Greater Southdale District Plan show how creating affordable housing at this site does comply with the Southdale area plan to create more housing choices, to create more affordability, to have access for seniors, to have seniors' age in place, to have a different mix of housing. Say that again. And so, again, the question is, does this residential use that is being proposed comply with the plan? And that's what the resolution is asking. And that's really it. If there's any questions?
Are there? Are there questions for Director Hawkinson? There are no questions. Commissioner Barugie?
So I just want to clarify, we're not discussing TIF. We're not discussing how TIF works. We're not discussing whether we like TIF. We don't have to say anything about TIF. What we're talking about is only whether this building is appropriate for this area, since it's a residential area.
Chair Commissioners, that's exactly right.
Okay.
On the table tonight is whether or not the proposed plan complies with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to, that it does. What's, what's the motion? Sorry. Anyway, gosh, I don't have it in front of me.
Doubt the attached.
Okay, yeah, cause I, can you pull that one back up? Thanks. I recommend.
Resolution B-21-22.
Okay, thank you. I went completely blank on that one. Approved resolution number B-21-22.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Thank you, Ms. Hawkinson. Well, I'm sorry. Well, now it's the time of the agenda for chair and member comments. Do any members have comments?
I just have, so when are we going to get that basement code fixed? So we don't have to have people come in here and talk about basements. How does that happen?
We talked a little bit about that at the, the work session tonight, but it sounds like it is something that will be approved yet, or proposed yet here in 2021.
Good question. Anyone else? West? Commissioner Bennett?
I got comments. Always. So usually Commissioner Miranda shares some stuff, you know, regarding the climate. And since, and that's the gist of my comments tonight, since we heard about the sustainability, I guess, initiative. It's a good reminder of what really, really matters right now in regards to pretty much anywhere you live on the face of this earth. And I feel like if we don't talk about it, it just kind of keeps getting kicked down the road. So I was just, I was thinking the whole time during that presentation, like, this is a good step. But man, we need like a giant leap forward to like actually do something meaningful. I, I just wanted to talk about that because again, you know, if you zoom out, here we are in Edina. You know, we, we have it all here, you know, minus maybe safer infrastructure options for bikes and walking and buses. We got it all. So like, when you look at our city, like, what do we need, right? And a lot of times proposals come to us and it's like, yeah, this needs to happen. But does it really need to happen? And I think if we actually looked at development just from some of that perspective, we can really start to think sustainably. Like, the most sustainable thing is really to do nothing. And then if you're, if you're actually going to do something with the existing building or property is to reuse it, make the most out of it. And then the least sustainable thing is to tear it down and build something new. And if you're going to do that, the responsible thing is to start sustainably with the design, how, how you're going to think of the whole life cycle. And I feel like that has just been missing out of pretty much everything we see come across, at least for me, the last four years being on this. And I think, you know, if, if we're going to consider things and we have that pyramid of discretion, it would be, it'd be really good if we had some more aggressive discretion toward the environmental and the sustainable thing to do. And really hold that paramount when it comes to different projects and opportunities that come before us. Cause the, I mean, the planet's only getting hotter and hotter. I mean, just go outside, you'll feel it, right? There's just this sense of urgency and I feel like, I feel it every day. And it's just like, it, it's just growing and growing, but nothing's really happening quick enough. And it's just going to keep, keep getting worse. So I just, I just want to talk about it. I know you usually bring things up and it's just really stewing on my mind. And I, and like this summer is such a reminder in this, in this area of like, we as Edina, like, we can afford to really do something like this. There's communities that can't afford to do stuff. And I don't think we have an excuse. So I'm just totally open to other ideas and comments, discussions, whatever, at any time. time. And I think it's just good to talk about it. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, just, I would like to comment on that. I, I can tell you, this is a public service announcement to hire your best architects and engineers out there because I can tell you that, um, sustainable, sustainable design can actually be cost effective and we actually need to really start talking to clients about, um, total, you know, life costs, not first costs, because a lot of the paybacks now are within five years. So again, I don't wanna throw the developers under the bus, cause you know, they're my friends and, and I gotta be friendly with that, but, um, it tends to be what your comment, Commissioner, about it is they follow that money road, right? Often where if a city or a school or whatever it may be, they know they're there for the long term, so they're gonna make better decisions. And that I see quite often in actually hiring the right people to do things, um, they are doing the right thing and just putting it in and it doesn't cost really much more and sometimes it's just evenly cost effective. So that's the unfortunate part is that it's possible. People just aren't aware of it or educated on it or lazy, to be, to be frank, um, because they, they have a plan from 1982 that they've been regenerating, maybe tweaking a material here or there, doing something a little more modern, you know, but it's not, it's, it's, there's opportunity and that's the, that's where we need to really start pushing that. And I think the only way we can do it is by requiring it through code, unfortunately. So.
You know, just, just you saying that, it kinda just struck me, my, my family and I, we've done like a big remodel over the last year and like myself and my friends, like we love this stuff. And so part of it, I feel like, again, it's like about the education and engagement in the city, like it doesn't have to be this iron fist. It can be, it should be something like we really celebrate, right? And so, I mean, everything that we've done with what we've done to our home, you know, is really thinking of the future, is like, how do, how can we most creatively do this? There's a lot like, there's a lot of excitement and education to happen, but like if you don't know what to do, it's just hard to start as like, you know, as an ordinary citizen out there, it's what do I do? And then you just think there's a huge cost to it, but it is exciting to try to contribute toward a, a better future. And I, I, I mean, I'm not a spokesperson for my generation, but so many people that I'm friends with, I mean, that is just, that's what we all care about and like that's what we expect, right? And we're, we're the leaders of the city, so I, I hope, I hope to bring some more excitement to that instead of, come on, more silver panels. But, um, anyways, thanks.
Commissioner Miranda, are you interested in this topic?
I feel compelled to talk about this. Well, one thing, I just wanna start out by pointing out that, um, you talked about, you know, sort of reduce, reuse, recycle, where if you have a building, you know, it's most efficient to just leave it up and, and like what you did is, is remodel it or what the previous, uh, the last variance we just looked at was instead of tearing down the house, they're gonna just extend the, the house or whatever. But all, but that's, I think you need to think about that in terms of if you're gonna have the same use. So if you have a, a house or even a commercial building and you tear it down and build something more efficient, you know, how big of a win is that really if you're tearing it down and building something completely new? But I think a lot of what we deal with in the city is, um, you know, especially at our node, not in the single family home areas, but in the nodes in Southdale, is that when we take a parking lot and make that into, you know, a 20-story building or 10-story building or whatever, in that case, you know, you're, you're tearing up something and building something new, but by having multi, multiple families live there and having, um, stores there and, you know, on the first floor and you've got mixed use in that, in that building now, you then, that's way more sustainable because you're preventing people from having to drive to whatever, whatever's in the building, a coffee shop, a bank, whatever. So I think it really depends on the kind of development that we're talking about and the kinds of things that we're looking at. So the way the city is going in terms of mixed use development makes a lot of sense as opposed to redeveloping a parking lot into separate uses, in which case you're still gonna have to drive places and it's not really gonna solve things. So I think, I think that's really important to consider, you know, when we do things. But also, I mean, I see, I mean, to your other points, it's like, you know, you walk outside and it's, you know, 98 degrees or whatever and we've had, um, well, a couple, a week ago, we were already 15 days at 90 degrees or above in Minnesota for the summer and that's, it's not a record by any stretch of the imagination, but it's, it's much higher than average, which is, I don't know, like five or something. And then, you know, pretty much for the past month, we've had orange skies every day. And I remember moving to Minnesota, you know, 23 years ago and we had blue skies, you know, and we have orange skies every day. It's like, I keep thinking it's gonna go away and we're gonna have a better day. And tomorrow they're talking about smoke, right? I mean, like unhealthy to even go outside. And, and then we come in here and it seems like all that vanishes and we don't really, we don't really consider it and we don't really demand it, you know? And, and I think, cause we, at our work session, we had a discussion about parking. And I think, you know, maybe we need to help educate the, the citizen, the residents and the, and the council a little bit, which is our job, about why we need different parking and, and how that affects, you know, the air that we breathe and whether, I mean, I sent a article out to the commission, uh, this morning about, you know, um, at what temperatures can humans no longer survive? And we're reaching places in this, in this world where humans can't survive anymore. Or why we had the emergency, uh, alert today about the heat is that it's not just the temperature, it's the humidity. In Minnesota, we, we're getting a lot more humid weather than we used to get. And part of what we're doing with the climate action plan is talking about resiliency and being able to do things like have shelters for people and have air conditioned places for people that don't have air conditioning and such. So, I mean, all this stuff ties together and it's like, I feel this huge urgency when I'm not here and then we come here and it's just sort of like, okay, what's, you know, can we do this specific thing according to this, you know, law regulation or whatever? And, and it's like our hands are tied. I don't know. I, I feel very, a lot of frustration, I guess.
Commissioner Agnew, deeper you?
Well, I don't have notes on sustainability, so if anyone else wanted to carry that forward.
Anyone else want to talk, anyone about sustainability? Commissioner Agnew, something other than sustainability?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm one of those people that had a, like, surprise COVID baby. I had a baby three months ago and no one really knows, cause you're on camera the whole time and you can't see his stomach. Although Commissioner Barugie knew because she called me, uh, one meeting, before a meeting and she heard a baby and I was like, oh, I had a baby yesterday and, um, that opened up. That opened up that conversation. But most of my fellow commissioners didn't know this. Um, and I think that's because I, I tend to be a private person and I also don't ever want to be in a situation where people are making decisions for me. One example that I'll use, and I don't like that the world is like this, but there, it came into my assessment of would I have been elected or chosen to be the vice chair if everyone knew that I was nine and a half months pregnant at the time? And maybe I'm not giving my fellow commissioners enough credit there, cause everyone who I've met here is, has really been awesome. But I will say, and why I'm bringing this up now, um, is that I stayed home last time because I'm still nursing my daughter and it was just easier. But kind of last minute, at the beginning of the meeting, I was told, oh, you have to remain on camera, you can't go off camera. And I was put in an uncomfortable position at that point. Although I will say that the city has been great partners and they're, they're trying their hardest to, to accommodate and I know that they have a lot to juggle with this new hybrid world and how we're all navigating it and the laws that are being passed down by our state. But I will say that it's 2021 and it's still not easy for a mother, a nursing mother to participate in this fashion. So, um, there might be times, especially times when our meetings run late and they do run very late sometimes, where I'll be stepping away, so I have a room in the back that I can use. I will still be listening when I am stepping away from those meetings, though I will not be able to voice and I won't be able to contribute. So I'll be intentional about when I step away. Yeah. So, you know, ultimately the reason that I'm sharing this too is just that it is really important for me to be involved here, be involved in the planning commission. And I'm calling it out because I'm also really proud of it. I'm proud that I'm here tonight. I'm proud that I created a human being with my body. I'm proud that I'm a part of this city and that I'm able to contribute in this fashion. I'm proud that I have a husband who supports me and encourages this when we have two kids under two at home. And they tell me that I'm the first, like, woman who's on a planning commission or even like of anyone who's been involved in the city council who has necessitated these accommodations. So in that sense too, like I'm proud to, you know, be the first, to echo a very wise woman. I'm proud to be the first and I'm also proud to know that I won't be the last. So, thank you.
Anyone, how about, I'll thank you and congratulations, maybe? Thank you for that presentation and congratulations very much for everything you've done. Anyone else?
Okay, I do have one more, but it's completely unrelated. So with all that, uh, could potentially staff speak to the presence of dirt at the site of the 4404, I think that's the address, Unvalley View there? I, I do wanna kind of understand a little bit more of, of if they're starting construction or, or why that dirt is there.
Yeah, I just sent an email to our, so I, I know it's out there. I've driven by it a couple of times and that, that's not right. And I know our residential redevelopment coordinator who patrols construction sites has been dealing with that property owner. I'm not sure what the status is, so I've just sent him an email to get an update on that. So we will follow up on. And I believe someone brought this up at the last city council meeting as well. So, um, we will follow up on that.
You got good ones? Anything more? Anyone else? I don't have anything tonight, but thank you to everyone. So I guess we'll go to staff comments.
Just a quick update on the last city council meeting and actions they took. So the parking ordinance was considered and what they, they did not take action. They would like to have a work session with the planning commission to better understand some of the background, have a face-to-face dialogue with, with where we're headed with that. So unfortunately, the council work sessions are packed full for the next several months. Right now it's looking like potentially not till December that we would get before them. If something changes, we will certainly let you know, but that's where that one is at. And the interlock and conditional use permit, they held the public hearing and they will take action at their meeting next week. That's it for staff.
Thanks. And then for the interlock and one, has it been decided that whether or not it gets approved, that, that the change would not require any change to the comp plan?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. For, for the interlock and one, you know, it was brought up that there was that image that showed different colors in the comp plan. There's this, this figure and showed different colors for different, different types of uses in different lots. And that if, if the project were to be approved, that it wouldn't require any change to the comp plan, that even though that figure is different?
That's correct. I believe you're referring to, um, so churches similar to schools and golf courses of permitted use, um, in the R1 district. And I showed some of the parking lots associated with churches across town to show how close they are to single family homes. And within the comprehensive plan, we have churches, some are guided semi-public public, some are guided low density residential, so we're not consistent there. Bottom line is the use is allowed in the same zoning district and really, so consistent with the comprehensive plan under both those designations.
Thanks, Carrie. Anybody else? Any exciting adjournments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'm motion to adjourn.
A second.
Yeah, motion, second, third, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.